Sorry to interrupt, but you're in a different room, different. So yeah, so first we had the health department and so we kind of have the lineup of who's going to be presenting and then. So when all the presentations are done, you know, there's certainly room for the board to have some budget discussion, you know. Depending on how far and deep you want to get into it, there are a few small changes that'll bring to your attention. And then remember, at the end of this evening, the board has to set a tax rate for fiscal year 24, the max advertised tax rate. And remember where we are at this point, we can always pull back from there, but we can't go over what that max advertised rate is at this point.
Now, what is our time limit for this meeting, about thirty until?
Well, normally we have four hour time limit, so.
Okay.
So I guess we can go as lazy as you want, or as short as you want.
Yeah, okay.
So, so yeah, so first up, we have. Blue Ridge Health District and we got Ryan McKay, Director of Administration here.
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to present a little bit about the health department briefly and then talk about our budget request and what we're seeking. For the next fiscal year, next slide. My name is Ryan McKay, I am the new district administrator for Blue Ridge, I started about a month ago. But I've been with the health district for nine years, actually nine years on Friday. I will start with just a little bit of an overview of our health district, if you're not familiar. We serve six localities, Savannah being one of them. And broadly speaking, we have five divisions where we have our administration team, which is really the fiscal budget process. And emergency planning side, communication, public engagement and population health, so how we're interacting with the community to provide education and outreach. And then sort of our traditional public health services, sort of the foundational pieces of public health. Clinical operations, immunizations, family planning, STI investigations. Environmental health, so onsite well and sewage. And our restaurant inspection and permitting side, and then epidemiology, this is investigating case outbreaks, communicable disease outbreaks. And so there is a number of staff in the health district that does this for every locality. And so the number you see down here, forty-one of the RHD physicians provide various levels of support. That's that sort of broad spectrum where we support each of our localities, including Savannah. There are seven dedicated positions for Savannah County, two of them are currently vacant. These would be the very service delivery, environmental health, clinical services, and then our office support staff who interact with the public most frequently. Next slide. Just a broad overview of how our budget works, this is the FY twenty-two actuals from last year. The southern includes specifics for Savannah County, but this kind of gives you a sense of where all our funding streams come from. One thing to note is that our grant funding noted in here does not include the COVID funding that we've received. So we've received nearly six million dollars in COVID funding over the last three years to support our operations. That funding for the most part will need to be spent by FY, the end of FY twenty-four. Another thing about the budget that you may know is that we have a state-local match. And so for the state funding and the local funding, the state provides fifty-five percent of that total budget and the locals provide forty-five percent. Based on the different J-LARK studies and formulations that have come up. So when we talk about some of our budget increases and the request for our budget. That is coupled with fifty-five percent match that comes from the state later on in FY twenty-four. Generally, they give us the allocations between July and the end of August. Next slide. I won't go through each of these individually, but there are five primary goals that we have for the health department based on our strategic planning. Obviously, we're going to prevent and control communicable diseases, help infants get a healthy start. So this is through our safe sleep and our CRI programs, CARC programs and WIC. We collect and manage a lot of data for births and deaths, so all of our vital records that we offer in our health departments. Providing health information and connections, that's the population health piece. And then last, catalyzing partnerships, so we have gone through a map to health process where. We work with local community partners to identify key areas that we can collaborate together on for improving access to different things that relate to public health. And finally, last slide. So in our funding request for FY twenty-four, we did seek an increase in funding to support a few things with the health department. One, it's to staff to provide an opportunity for us to increase our clinical services. Pre-pandemic levels have basically leveled off, we've not seen an increase in the number of individuals coming in, that's due in part to our staffing. We are limited in staffing across the district and what we're seeking is additional funding to support physicians. Here in Savannah, so that we can increase clinical services, immunizations, family planning. Not just doing that here at the health department, but also going out into the community, working with community health workers. To identify what those needs are and then provide services more so where people are. We would also use some of this funding to support a supervisor, so right now we have two individuals who oversee all of our nursing staff across the district. This would provide more dedicated leadership here in Savannah. There is a five percent state employee salary increase scheduled to begin on July tenth. This is the second of a two-part series, the first increase came in July this current fiscal year. The other thing in our projected increase is related to health insurance premiums, so there was not an increase in our premiums for this current fiscal year. We're projecting a four percent increase based on the historical information we have. At this point, we don't have any information on that, so that's just something we're factoring into the budget request for the next fiscal year. If you have any questions about the budget, about health district, I'm happy to.
And then I'll pull up the actual budget request that's specific to the health. So again, they've got an increase this year, it's roughly about forty thousand dollars over the last year. For current fiscal year, they're at two eighty-six, two twenty-one, and the current request for fiscal year twenty-four is three twenty-five, five fifty-three.
And what are those increases?
Yeah, largely those increases are related to the five percent raise for our staff. And then for the physicians that we wanted to fund for Savannah to increase access to health services.
And one thing maybe for the board to know, do you have what the breakout is? I mean, certainly there is a five percent, but like the physician pieces too, do you know what that breaks out to?
I don't off the top of my head, but I could share that with you. One other part of this too is that the local dollars, there's a local dollars that go into sort of the general fund and then there's local only that we only spend here in Savannah. A portion of the funds that are provided by Savannah County support those administrative and higher level physicians that don't necessarily work in Savannah. My position, for example, but do direct support or direct services in Savannah.
Mr. McKay, I know that the MAP program studies every year to have health issues in every county. Are you familiar with the health issues in Savannah County, what are at key?
So the key things that they're working on aren't necessarily specific to health, but it does impact health. So transportation is one of them and that's common across all the localities for MAP to health. And so how do we provide people with access to health services if transportation isn't available? One of the other ones is related to broadband and literacy related to IT. So how do we help and support people navigate systems in order to access various levels of care? Whether that's through the health department or through medical providers, UVA, and really utilizing staff. Partially from us, but through our partners too, to navigate with folks to get access to care.
Yeah, I know that you all have added a community health person.
Yes.
And she's really struggling trying to get her feet on the ground because of such a rural area. Trying to get out in the community and find out what the needs are. So we are anxious to get her going so that we can get some of those needs as best we can. But we thank her for her work and thanks, I'll get back, because we, I mean, I'm used to the county nurse and we haven't had one in a long time. So that really helps us to bring some training as well to bigger health services. Any other questions?
This is three hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars, that's our share.
That's our share, correct, yes.
Any other questions for Mr. McKay?
Good to see a nurse on there, that's all, good to see a nurse on there, finally.
Yeah, I shared this with you a couple of years ago, I had a heart attack here in the courthouse. And I went to the health department to get an aspirin, you don't have any aspirin. Finally, I went to the. I mean, our office and. Got one from.
With a chiller cable?
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, it's not very helpful that we can't get an aspirin, we have no nurse.
We do have restrictions on what we can provide and I think that aspirin would be one of those things, because we're not a traditional primary care provider. It's not something that we, within this work can provide.
Okay, I know that from that one.
First aid kit downstairs, I think you should cut your leg off and we should put it back on.
Not that we want you to do that.
But it is quite a good first aid kit.
We haven't screwed it in there, but?
No, we're not.
Thank you so much. Next we have Savannah SPCA, Caitlin, this is that same.
Hi, everybody, I'm Caitlin Mancini, I serve as the president on our volunteer base. Board of Directors along with my treasurer, Jerry Russell, she served for many, many years. So we first want to thank you very much for your time and passing along our gratitude for all that you do for the county, especially for the SPCA. I always like to start with our mission of our life-saving mission to rescue the domestic animals of Savannah, that's dogs and cats. From cruelty, neglect and abandonment and putting them in good, loving, permanent homes. You can see just a couple, a very small, a couple of animals that we helped find loving homes for this year. Or twenty twenty-two, so over the past year. The next slide. We'll show you some of our statistics of last year, we took in over two, five hundred and twenty strays. You can see some of the other statistics there too, our surrenders are at an all-time high, we're averaging about two owner surrenders a week at this point. Our numbers for dogs especially are so high, we're going to have to. Close our doors for owner surrenders for a little bit because we just don't have anywhere to put them. The good news on the right column is that we reclaimed a hundred and twenty-eight animals with their owners. We had a hundred and sixty-four adoptions of dogs and cats in twenty twenty-two. And thanks to some pretty amazing volunteers and a group effort, especially of our staff and our manager. We transferred out over three hundred animals last year to different rescues and. Other SPCA's, some of them were flown out of state and we couldn't. We would be remiss if we did not say thank you to our animal control officer, our ACO for the intakes of just under two hundred animals last year. It's a huge effort and. I will just say, I mean, we as, as a board, we don't always know the ins and outs of the everyday operations. But for our monthly board meetings, we kind of get a synopsis from our manager and. It can, we are rounding kitten season right now, we know that our low numbers of cats right now will not last. Sometimes we are overloaded where we have, we don't even have cages for these animals that come in. We have to have some makeshift housing for them in our small, under thirteen hundred square foot building. Sometimes they stack up in the hallways, so. You will see Hutch down there, I included this photo, that's a little puppy Hutch. He got hit by a car, he was in foster care and got hit by a car, you can see on the right the X-ray. It was decided that instead of amputating this puppy who was, I believe, under six months old, if I recall. Instead of amputating this leg, we tried to save it with a couple pins. I recall that the, the, for that one surgery was over thirty-two hundred dollars. But that was decided upon and thankful for some volunteers and some really generous donations. But a huge part of our, what we pay for out of the year and out of the budget is of course, medical bills. So the next slide. So right now, I hate to read off slides, but that's going to be the best way to, to transfer what we're trying. Our critical shelter needs right now, we have a ton of chipped paint in the kennels, we use chemicals every single day to disinfect. The dog kennels and it's potentially hazardous and right now it's an unhealthy environment and the state vet was gracious enough to issue us a verbal warning right now. But we've been working really hard to get some other contractors out and get some estimates. The painting on the ceilings, there's been a ton of excess moisture, we have a, an aging ventilation system, to say the least, and that's caused mold and peeling paint. The aging building, like I mentioned, the donations not only pile up in our hallways, but our manager's office is quite literally in a closet. We have such small, limited space to work with, the cats have nowhere to socialize and we're hoping to expand the building and we're working hard right now to come up with some. Plans and hopefully some pro bono. Work from different contractors to come up with site plans and surveying and building plans and getting contractors out. That hopefully we can expand that to have a cat socialized area and also to expand our isolation room, which is extremely small. As a side note, I volunteered one time, we had a hoarding case come in. The isolation room of these animals that were in critical need was so overwhelmed and so overfull that not, we had to put them in cat carriers, dog crates, inside and out. They lined the hallways on two sides of the hallways. And not only talked about from a sanitizing such like perspective, trying to just clean these crates, that's what I went in just to have all hands on deck. But the isolation room is so small that these animals that come in, that could be potentially contagious and having diseases that could spread to other animals. We just have nowhere else to put them, so. And then the last is of course, the ventilation, like I mentioned, that would, it has such a strong odor when you walk in the door. If you've met, met any animals or gone to the shelter and visited at any time, even if you graciously brought in a stray animal or went to drop off donations. I'm going to be blunt that the smell just hits you in the face at the front door, the ventilation is quite poor. And lastly, I'm going to end on a positive note, as a board, we decided to invest in having a dedicated staff break room. We never had a break room for our hardworking staff, they literally went outside to sit under a small cover in rain, sleet, sunshine and snow. And now we have a dedicated break room for them, which I joke is a break box because it's literally a shed, it's a, it's a separate shed. That we had delivered to the shelter, it's been well received, we thought that it was, it was sort of a critical maneuver on our part to have this at the shelter. Because it would help with our staff retention and morale. Shameless plug, we're always looking for volunteers, you can volunteer at a lot of different committees, there's a couple listed there on the screen. There's, there's never a shortage, I should say, we always have a shortage of hands, but there's never a shortage of where we could use your help.
So just as the board may recall, let me just pull up their actual request. So as the board may or may not remember, again, the FSPCA operates as Savannah County's animal shelter. Again, the county has to have a shelter to bring animals to and instead of having our own separate facility. The county provides funding to the FSPCA for the services that they provide. Every year, and again, there's a memorandum of agreement with the FSPCA for what services we want them to provide, what services we don't want them to provide. And again, from a yearly basis, you know, going back probably five years or so now, I know. You know, they had struggles too, trying to keep employees, keep part-time help. So just as, as the county has done, they tried to bring some of their salaries up to retain their part-time help. And some of their full-time, they have a few full-time people as well. So as you see here in the columns, so the, so the baseline plus column, again, that is basically what it takes to operate the shelter. For everything they do at a hundred percent, but. We've got agreements with the FSPCA for to what degree we will provide reimbursement or will provide funding to them. Like for instance, and we did this some years ago, we went through to determine what amount of animals come in the shelter. Are, are the responsibility of them being the, the shelter for the county versus things that they do specifically to, to the FSPCA. So it worked out to roughly around seventy-five percent of what happens in the, in that shelter is from, you know, county, county services that are needed. So they've got these different budget lines and we've come to an agreement on what amounts we will provide funding for. Again, you can see a lot of them, like personnel, seventy-five percent. Pass through spay and neuter, that's money we get directly from the state and we just pass it on through because we don't, county doesn't run a spay or neuter program. You know, some other things, you know, seventy-five percent microchipping, the county actually had an agreement when we did the memorandum of agreement with. The FSPCA, we wanted a hundred percent of all animals that come into the shelter to be microchipped and also spayed and neutered as well. So those are just some of the percentages, so again, this is what it takes one hundred percent to operate the shelter. And then we've got these agreed-upon percentages, so the total request for this year is three fifty-six, two oh four. Which is an increase over the previous year from three forty-three, three sixty-four, so roughly around, around thirteen thousand dollars or so.
Any questions?
So the, the microchipping. Why is that that important to the county? You know, I think going back, you know, it really came down to, and I don't know, maybe Jerry or Caitlin want to, want to chime in too. I want to say from just a standpoint of being able to get the animals back to their rightful owners and stuff like that, instead of, instead of them not being able to. Again, as you hear, they, they got limited space in the shelter, so the quicker that animals can get back to their rightful owners, instead of being in the shelter, it just. Again, it's a small facility, if the county had to do a facility like this on its own, it would be significantly far more expensive to build a structure. To get the personnel in there and everything, so. And maybe Caitlin or Jerry, if you want to chime in on the micro, microchipping, if that, if that is what you recall.
I, I have to agree exactly, that's, that's many being a rural shelter, even if that animal at one point had a collar on. It might have gotten snagged on a tree or who knows along its stray journey and it's one of the first things that our staff do when we, when we take in a stray. Or if someone has brought in an animal, whether it be ACO or somebody who's pulled over on the side of the road. To try to pick up this animal, that they do a scan and exactly, it expedites the process to get to not only getting. Getting it back to the rightful owner, but at least on, for, for my animals, I'll speak personally. I believe there's also a scan to say that they're up to date on vaccines and rabies shots or whatever their last medical, recorded medical was. But yes, it's to expedite that, really, the bottom line is to expedite it back to the rightful owner. Did I miss anything, Jerry, is that about right? Oh, she was going to unmute.
There we are, there we are, yeah, that is, that is the major reason why we do that. And I have my animals all microchipped too, so.
Thank you. And then why the need for the ventilation now, is there anything that's different from the past? What, why is, is the smell worse than it was or is it just something that's always been there?
Gosh, since I have volunteered and been out the shelter, it has always been that way. But with an increase in animals and intake and being in such a small confined space. Again, with the weather that we've seen in exceptionally warm winter with moisture and all combined, having to take extra sanitary precautions, et cetera. I think it has gotten worse, but again, I think that can fluctuate on the number of stray animals and the number of animals that are in our care.
Yeah, and the recent, the recent mildew mold on the ceilings and things, that's more recent. And we had the ceilings painted, I would say, three years ago, so it's back. And we had someone come and inspect, a mold inspector, and basically is what he told us, it's the ventil, it's, it's going to come from the ventilation. And, and the building's old and, you know, we want to keep our employees safe, so we're looking into that. And we're going to have the ceilings repainted again and with some antimicrobial paint this time to help prevent that.
Thanks.
Yeah, and then mold is definitely a health issue for your employees.
Yeah, and we're cognizant of that and we don't want anybody, we've offered them, at this point, we have offered that they can wear masks in there until the situation's finished being remediated. So, you know, we're always looking out for the employees and we try to keep our employees because they're very valuable to us.
So suggested that we go with a commercial or a dehumidifier and one professional came in and said, you know, you're, you're kind of working against. You could put a dehumidifier in there, but that's not going to be solving your problem. So I believe we have some sort of dehumidifier that constantly runs or it runs on a percentage of moisture in the air. But we're trying to get to the root of it for the overall safety and health of our, of our employees, staff and, and the animals, of course.
Okay, thank you, thank you for taking care of our animals. The next we have carpet extension, Miss Kim Mayo.
And you can just let me know when you want to go to next slide.
Just reminding you of what our mission statement is, and I know I work closely with a few of you and I just want to make sure that everybody's aware of what we do. I can't tell you everything we do in five minutes, so we'll hit the highlights tonight, but go ahead to the next slide. I think this is probably most important with regards to the budget discussion is our staffing. So you have over fifty years of experience in our office, which I think is pretty phenomenal, an extension today. Fay Anderson's been with us for twenty-five years. Brittany Redman was recognized, our unit sports staff was recognized as employee of the month in May, and I know that sounds silly, but that's the entire university. So not just units, but the entire university, so we're really proud of our staffing levels. I was honored with national distinction this year through extension, so. I, not to toot our own horn, but we have experience and it shows in what we do in the county. I include the quote from a community member, Justin Avoglia, about how he was able to take on leadership after working with our ag extension agent, Rick Hernandez. So teaching the skill, but then having him able to convey to others, and that's the basis of what we do through volunteers. So your dollars, Savannah County dollars, fund these. And that's the basis of what we do through volunteers. So your dollars, Louisiana County dollars, fund these positions. And our resources, with the exception of Fay's salary is a hundred percent grant funded. And Brittany's is a hundred percent state funded. So just wanted to remind you of who you have and what we can do for you. So the next slide tells us who's not housed in Fluvana, but also provides services to our citizens. And this is important in the agriculture realm because one agent can't do, can't be the expert in all of the things. So Rick, housed in our office, horticulture, agronomy, that is his focus. We also have our FCS agents that have financial basis and food nutrition basis. And then the remainder of our ag agents that we support, Carrie Swanson and Albemarle dealing with pasture management equine emphasis. But that doesn't, that's not where she stops. Um, Charles Rawson is the cattle expert. There is more information right there at the tip of his tongue. I mean, I'd have to go searching for Dave and he could spit out cattle prices and projected trends to producers. You should sell your cattle now based on this history, right at the tip of his tongue. It's phenomenal. Sarah Sharp is our commercial horticulture specialist, um, housed in Green County. She also has a strong livestock background too. So we, again, can't be the expert for everything, but we also have access to the resources through both Virginia Cooperative Extension at VSU. And at Virginia Tech. Rick has done a phenomenal job of partnering with our um, extension specialists on campus at VSU as well. Snapshot, um, again, just to kind of highlight, volunteers are the basis of what we do. So in the four H program, six hundred and forty-three youth received over six hours of instruction in, in soil and plant science. Right? I can't do that. I am one person. So our volunteers such as master gardeners and master naturalists are the ones that are really helping me. And helping our ag agents reach our participants. I would highlight the other community um, volunteers that we work with. Um, through the food nutrition program, Fay has assistance on food distribution, providing educational information to those participants as well. The bottom snapshot just talks about your return on investment. That is not just for every dollar you spend. We, we feel that we return a two dollar and twenty-one cent value. That's based on the total input from state as well as federal funding. I would highlight using that thirty-dollar, ninety-cent value of volunteer time, a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars worth of time. And that's Fluvana alone, over four thousand hours of volunteer time. And I, I just, I'm so thankful for them. But that's only, that's the only way we're able to do what we do. All right, next slide. Just a, a quick highlight, again, can't tell you everything we've done. Um, we were able to reach over a thousand, over eleven hundred youth. One thousand, one hundred eighty-four youth in the program year last year in school, hands-on programming. Rick teaching classes, using county resources like the community garden as the platform to teach folks, not just those that have their own plot there. It was open to the public. So those are just a snapshot of what we do.
Was that one thousand some separate youth?
Yes, one thousand, one hundred eighty-four individual youth without duplications. There were certainly more, you know, some of my fourth graders went to camp. Did the third grade gardening program. Um, some, you know, we definitely have duplication, but that was unique learners.
All in for them.
All in for them, yeah. Most of them through school, in-school programs this year, holiday, we were able to get back in school. So really happy about that. Next slide. Again, just a reminder, there's our volunteers taking youth on a hike at Pleasant Grove during an Earth Day program. Cannot do it alone. Um, it is truly a partnership that we have access to those resources. Our volunteers help us meet our mission. So. That goes to our requests this year. We do have an increase. Um, this is not Kim Mayo saying, hey, I'd like a pay raise, so I think we should. We have an MOU. Um, you fund one-third of the salaries of our extension agents. One-third of that is your responsibility. And so almost ten years ago, Virginia Tech said, let's do a compensation study. And they said, oh, we're not compensating our employees appropriately. And in twenty-twenty-three, they decided to do something about it. So um, this is a result of that adjustment to meet market standards and other industries. I will share that we do not fund a hundred percent of that thirty-three percent. We don't fund a hundred percent of that for the folks who are not housed in Fluvana. We each have a, a different percentage, ranging from twenty percent to seventy percent based on their assignment to us. That, the funding formula looks a little funny and I'm not even a hundred percent sure. I could just tell you that it's not one-third, one-third, one-third. For all the employees not housed here. We contribute because they serve us. Does that, does that piece make sense? How I explained it?
County's responsible for a third of their salary?
The county is responsible for one-third. So let's take Carrie Swanson and Albemarle, for example. Louisa puts in a little bit of her one-third, Levanna puts in a little bit, Albemarle puts in the bulk because she's housed there. Green puts in a little bit to make up that full one-third of her local responsibility.
Okay, and the rest comes from the state?
Rest comes from the state. There's some, a small federal piece there, yes. Any, sorry.
Yeah, and, and then again, as, as Ms. Mayo said, again, their current fiscal year budget's one oh two and they're requesting one sixteen, six oh nine. So about a fourteen thousand dollars.
All in the contract, so we didn't ask for any increases in supplies or anything like that. We're looking at other sources for funding. Grant Fay, Fay is our grant fund. She is seeking out those, those capacity building grants to help us do our work. So we're really happy there. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, you have, you have camp this year, so you haven't noticed that for July? How many of our students just made camp?
So we have added a camping partner in Charlottesville Albemarle this year. So whereas before I was able to take about a hundred and thirty campers, this year my limit right now is eighty. And if they are not able to fill their allocated spaces, we will certainly fill in with ours. We're approaching full registration now. We don't camp until July, so it's, it's a popular program. Glad we're able to get back to camp.
And of course you get the water today.
We did. We had a well-water test clinic that was taken in today.
Okay, any other questions for Ms. Camp? Good job.
So thank you, thank you.
It's different in person.
No, I don't have my person to ask if the volume's okay.
Um, just a quick overview, um, we did check out a hundred and sixty-nine items. We checked out a hundred and sixty-nine thousand items last year, including um, twenty-five thousand downloaded ebooks and audiobooks. And we are part of a sorcium with seventeen libraries that helps us provide ebooks and audiobooks. Um, our summer reading program almost doubled from the year before. We have five hundred and seventeen kids and teens participate. In summer reading and last year we had two hundred and eighty-three. So it was really busy summer, um, including a new super reader program of those five hundred and seventeen kids. Sixty-five kids concluded their age groups. And then they went on to do five hundred and twenty more entries with each entry being three hundred minutes. So um, it was a very popular program. We had a donor come forward and donate um, a drawing prize of a hundred dollar Amazon gift card. Those kids really wanted that gift card. Um, and then we had thirty-one hundred kids attend workshops. Some of which the master gardeners partner with us and put on, and the master naturalists. So we do a lot of hikes and meadows and gardens. Um, we still do grab and go kits. We did over three thousand kits last year, including a new one that is um, spice of the month. Which is super popular. We did furikake last month, which is a Japanese spice blend. People were super excited about it. We've done Jamaican jerk and I think this month we're doing caraway. So if you wanna stop by the fourth Saturday of the month, you can get a sample and recipes and information. And that's, um, we're trying to add more adult programming too, and that's one of them. So. And we did have um, storytime last year and we had over almost fourteen hundred people attend storytime last year. So programs are getting busy again. Next slide. Um, just as a quick update, we had, had an agreement with the state. We are required to provide. Um, Fluvana County is required to at least have fifty percent of the median statewide local operating expenditures. And we are at fifteen seventy-eight per capita. And the state medium is, fifty percent of the state medium is eleven eighty-six per capita. So right now we are number seventy-nine out of ninety-four libraries in the state. So when I came here fourteen years ago, we were last. So we've moved up.
And they, and I know the board's taken incremental steps.
We had an agreement and now we're, now we're no longer under contract with the state because we've met our requirements. We're doing what really well, I think. Um, next slide. Um, revenues are still down from pre-COVID. Pre-COVID, we brought in about ten thousand dollars a year. Um, and last year we only brought in fifty-four hundred. And we were kind of projecting to bring in that about next year too. But that's for fines, taxes, printouts, and most of that's like ten cents a page. So it, it doesn't add up real fast. But um, um, and state aid FY twenty-four estimates are a hundred and thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and fifty-three. I will say the budget, the second half of the biennium, both budget committees at the state level. One has um, proposed a million dollars additional to all the libraries in the state. And the other has proposed two million dollars additional. So hopefully that'll go up, but we won't know until it passes. But again, when I came, we were at forty-nine thousand, so we're almost triple where we were. And the total county administra, in the, the county administrative recommended budget, the total was five hundred and twenty-two, five twenty-five. And that includes the state aid. So the local funding requested is three eighty-eight, five seventy-two.
Any questions to send?
We'll say what's the difference? Yeah, again, so the current fiscal year, she's at um, uh, five twelve, four fifty. And again, um, my proposed budget was five twenty-two, so a ten thousand dollar increase. I'm trying to see if there's anything in particular that stands out over last year. No, there's a little increase in some equipment over last year, uh, electronic equipment and stuff like that. That's about four, four thousand out of the ten, but I think some of the two just kind of comes back to. Um, just, you know, some additional programming that they're doing.
No. The equipment is, um, we're swapping out their computer room. So that it's those little computers that sit behind the monitors. So we have to replace all the monitors, whereas normally we wouldn't do that. We would just keep using them until they break, but um, these work out better.
Computer room is always used.
Yeah, yeah, it's pretty busy.
We shut that down, we better let more button.
Right. I will say that we have a new, we received art funding last year and we got a privacy pod. That is in the computer room and it's um, soundproof. You can do telehealth and interviews and stuff. And then we've had a couple people use it. That's kind of, it's kind of ugly. I wanna do something about that, but it works real well.
Yeah, okay, thank you. All right, register on Ms. Joyce's page.
Evening. I don't have a presentation, but uh, we'll look at my, my budget. Now, originally we had requested funds to prepare for a possible primaries. Looking at us being in a presidential election. We'll know we'll have a, a March presidential primary and a possible June primary. So um, I mean, Eric decided that we kind of maybe wait on the June, the possibility of having that June primary. Knowing that we will have a June, a March um, presidential.
Yeah, really the biggest thing on the, of the Joyce's budget again, so there's some, there's some part-time ballot. And you've got the early, forty-five day early voting, if there's a primary, any primary or election. And then there's poll workers and stuff like that. So, so really the biggest piece I didn't fund out of my budget. And we can look at it in a couple of different ways. As Joyce mentioned, was the June primary. It's not known at this point. So we could budget for it and, you know, we would just have to put in another thirty, I think it's like thirty-eight thousand dollars or something. Um, into her budget. And if, and if the primary doesn't happen, well, then that goes back to fund balance. Or you could fund, you know, kind of what we know at this point. And then potentially, let's just say we get through, um, let's just say we get through the March primary. I mean, we'll be able to better see, I mean, if, if there's gonna be a, a, a June primary, the county is gonna have to fund it. Um, but once you get through the March primary, you may have a better idea of what the expenditures have been for part-time salaries. Um, election costs and things like that from, from election workers working on election day. But, but then again, it just may be that we would have to come to the board for the full amount. So with it being kind of up in the air as far as a June primary, that's the only piece I did not really fund in my budget, in my budget for what Joyce put forward. Again, she had a, um, there was a big increase. One, one of the bigger increases was replacing seven out of the eleven scanners and stuff like that, uh, scanners. And then there needs to be another, I think it's four, I think we're replacing some out years. But um, Joyce could probably speak more clearly on, on what the need is for that. And so that's a fifty thousand dollar increase right there.
So we were trying to, uh, uh, our machines are aging out. They have a ten-year expectancy. And we purchased a few of them in twenty-twelve, but what we wanted to do was get ahead of the game. We didn't wanna wait until twenty-twenty-four and experiment with the equipment during a presidential election. We wanted to be able to train uh, the OEs on how to use it and be prepared by the time November twenty twenty-four occurs. So that was what we were trying to do in replacing those aging out vote scanners. And that's just the scanners, not the um, the AD, uh, the handicap accessible portion. But just the vote scanners at this point.
Any questions for Joyce?
Seems like a good plan to replace those scanners now.
And how many?
Seven, seven.
Seven that we have at this point, right?
I know that some language was brought up when I haven't paid enough attention to Richmond. Are they still talking about possibly lowering the number of days for the pre? From early voting, yeah, the early voting from forty-five to, I had heard from forty-five to fourteen.
That would be lovely.
Expenses, the forty-five days of early voting.
Well, you can see right here, I mean, we budget for, for, for part-time personnel for those ten weeks during the, each section. It's about fifteen-six for the November election, fifteen-six for the June primary, fifteen-six for the March primary. So yeah, we pay every year for forty-five days.
And it could vary with next year's election because, you know, people, we have the turnaround and, and you're training people. And they may not wanna work or you may need more than we're planning on having because that will be a pretty big election.
No, I know, I know through some of the, what's happening at the state level, there's some discussion, I don't know where it is with um. Providing more funding for the twenty-twenty-four um, elections, but presidential, but we'll, we'll see what really happens with that. Yeah, one of those things where they'll pay ten percent of it and say, all right, y'all get the other ninety. Well, again, the forty-five day early voting, that, that came right on the back of the locality to provide that. You know, it certainly provides ample time for people to get out and vote, but you know, that's it. That's an expense of the donating. So what's the status of that potentially going to fourteen?
I don't know where we stand with that. And you know, I kind of doubt it with forty-five days, people like it. They like to have the idea of more. But on our, on the, on the part of the GRs, we think it's overkill. I think people can get what they need to get done in a two week period, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that's one of those things where we can make phone calls.
Yeah.
Or email.
It, and that would have to be a bill, right?
I think they've got something.
There's anything else that it is COVID committee or whatever. It's maybe too late now.
Maybe too late.
I would be surprised if, if, if it's not being discussed. Yeah.
Other registrars in the state are having the same.
Oh yeah, we all are in the same boat.
They put the burden on our pockets, but they put the burden on them for workload. This, the increase of workload that they have. Like you said, y'all have to do it four different times during the year. That's a lot of days. That's a whole school year.
Forty-five days of having an election day. You have to prepare for it. Each day is like having a brand new day.
And then too, just the first, there's a personnel component of it between uh, this pace and then even HR, hiring part-time people. For these little discreet moments of time that, you know, they may not always wanna be, uh, you know.
Where they may find a full-time job.
Right, yeah. So, so it, it is, it is, it is labor intensive for, for sure, so. But it, but again, going back to the, the one primary I did fund, that's about thirty-eight thousand, so. So the board can choose to add it in, including the tax rate, you could add it in, you could fund it out of fund balance, or you could just say, we're not going to fund it. And if, if we see that, that, that it's going to occur, we can see where Miss Pace's budget is after the March primary. And if there's a funding requirement still needed, then we would just have to come to the board for that, so. Do that under the general fund, yeah.
All right, okay, thank you, Mr. George.
Thank you all.
Thank you, ma'am.
Social services can be.
Good evening. I have to move to the seat.
As long as it doesn't be that in the middle of us sitting in it.
He was six feet tall, would you do it lower then?
I wish.
Just let me know when you want to go next slide.
Okay, next slide, yeah.
Okay, this is a, oh, sorry, I'm serious.
So this is just an overview of what I'm going to talk about. Our overall budget increases, internal alignment, and our CFP request. And so this is our total budget request for fiscal year twenty-four, three point four million. And you can see how much is local funds, that's the green, the orange is state, and the blue is federal funding. And so our budget, like the health department, is based on um, match rates. So we need, in order to get that much orange and blue, we have to have that much green. So um, if any of the local funding is cut, then even, there's going to be even more state and federal funds cut from our budget. Next slide. Oh, and I wanted to mention one thing on the last slide.
Can we go back?
Yeah, if you don't mind. So um, every year, and in our state budget, we have two uh, staff and operating budget lines. And one is the pass-through line, which gets us through the second half of the year. And we don't know from year to year what the federal match rate's going to be. And for a lot of years, federal match rate kept going up. But over the last few years, the federal match rate has been going down. And so since fiscal year nineteen, it's gone down um, by about three percent, which comes out to about forty-eight thousand dollars. So, and like I said, until, you know, after we go into the budget, um, we won't know what that match rate's going to be, but. Um, and so this is our recommended budget. And the county administrator's recommended budget for us is about seventeen thousand six hundred and fifty-two less. And so a thousand of that is the vehicle repairs budget line. And so the county administrator recommended a thousand dollars less based on our previous years of spending, which is okay. And the other sixteen thousand is for an internal alignment, and I'll talk a little bit about that.
And then I'll pull, and I'll pull the budget document up after, after this may build sort of presentation as well.
Yeah. So um, and this is fiscal year twenty-two spending. So fifty-two million dollars was spent on Pluvana Social Services in fiscal year twenty-two. Um, that includes uh, administer our administrative budget, and that also includes um, benefits that have been paid out to recipients in Pluvana County. And out of that fifty-two million, one point two million was local funds. And so um.
Kim, random benefits?
Um, mostly Medicaid and SNAP are the biggest ones. And um, so the fifty-two million, that's up from forty-five million last year. And then the one point two million local funds is actually down from one point three million um, last year. So, next. And this is just a little bit of what we've done during fiscal year twenty-two. And um, so a lot of that's fifty-two million, so forty-three million of that is um, what residents have received in medical assistance. And um, there's currently over six thousand people in Pluvana County who receive Medicaid. And we averaged fifty-seven new Medicaid applications each month. And there was almost five million dollars paid out in SNAP benefits to over two thousand Pluvana residents in fiscal year twenty-two. And we averaged about fifty-six new SNAP applications each month. And then the TANF numbers as well. Um, one hundred and sixty-two thousand was paid out to one hundred and forty folks. The next slide. And this is just um, more benefits that's paid out. Three hundred and thirty thousand was paid out in childcare assistance to fifty-five families. Three hundred and thirteen thousand was paid out in energy assistance for four hundred and fifty-four families. And then three hundred and forty-eight thousand was paid out in adoption assistance for twenty-two Pluvana children who were adopted from foster care. Next slide, please. And this is just other assistance, um, for a foster care assistance, that's a hundred percent federal funds. Fifty-six thousand in fostering futures, fostering futures is the program. It's designed for children who age out of foster care at eighteen, where we can continue to support them um, until they are able to support themselves, and they can stay in that program until they're twenty-one. And then auxiliary, um, auxiliary grant assistance, we have two residents that are eligible for that. And that pays for their assisted living, assisted care. And general relief, and then we have fifty-eight thousand dollars in purchase of services where we can purchase direct services for, for clients. Next slide, please. And so this um, is just a chart that shows the number of residents in Pluvana County who received benefits. And um, in fiscal year twenty-two, six thousand three hundred and twenty-seven residents of Pluvana County have received SNAP TANF and/or Medicaid. And it says one in five, it's actually almost one in four, because it's twenty-three percent of the population. And you can see the SNAP numbers, um, they were on a trajectory where they were continuing to go down until COVID. And then they went up, and then the Medicaid numbers could continue to go up. A lot of that has to do with Medicaid expansion a few years ago. And childcare went up, um, a lot of policies were put in place during COVID to make it easier uh, for families to be eligible for childcare assistance.
What uh, sort of percentage of Medicaid is elderly versus young people?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I could find out. Because we have, actually, there's three types of categories of Medicaid. There's ABD, but, which is age blind and disabled, and there's families and children. And then there's Medicaid expansion for the folks that work and earn low wages.
Has SNAP gone down now since they probably sold it? Have they taken money from the SNAP program?
February sixteenth was the last emergency payment.
Oh.
So that's pretty huge.
Right.
Um, so during COVID, a couple of things that happened as a result of federal public health emergency. One was um, SNAP emergency benefits. So everyone who receives SNAP, whether you're eligible for the maximum benefit or not, you receive the maximum benefit. If you're already receiving the maximum benefit, you receive an extra ninety-five dollars a month. And so that's been happening for the last three years. And in December, Congress decided to separate the benefits from the public health emergency and decided to end all the extra benefits. And so that's going to be pretty huge. And just to give you a little bit of an example of that, um, we have a lot of ABD folks, age blind and disabled, in a household of one. Due to their social security, they're only eligible for twenty-six dollars a month in SNAP benefits. But the maximum benefit for one person is two hundred and eighty-one dollars. So for the last three years, they've been getting two hundred and eighty-one dollars a month in SNAP benefits. Starting in March, they'll go back to the twenty-three dollars a month. So um, and then also April first, we'll start doing um, Medicaid redeterminations again during COVID. We were instructed not to do redeterminations, um, we were not close to any Medicaid cases. And so now, when we start doing the renewals again, if people are no longer eligible, then their Medicaid cases.
So y'all would be really working hard. Any questions for Kim?
No, 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 I don't know.
He's just, he was just telling me I always leave my Prius running.
Someone let us know that someone's internal lights were on in their car and somebody touched the engine. At the last meeting, I stopped and.
Oh.
Oh, is someone doing it?
Yeah. Yeah, it is.
Oh, no, I don't know, no, no, no.
No.
I think that someone might be you.
That's me. It is.
Sorry, Kim.
That's a little human, a little human. Any other questions for Ms. Kim?
I think she got some more slides.
And I don't cut too short.
I'll try to make it quick.
No, don't, don't rush.
So that was our benefit programs, and this is our services program. So in child welfare, we have child protective services. In fiscal year twenty-two, we did ninety-six investigations, family assessments. Um, we averaged twenty-two in-home services, family support services cases a month. And those are the cases where uh, more than likely, we've already done an investigation, there's a high risk of abuse neglect. There's a high risk of the child entering foster care, so we provide intensive services to the family. Sometimes we even go to court and there's a child protective order in place to try to prevent the child from coming into foster care. And that plays a lot into CSA and what CSA funds are used for. So we conducted six outreaches, that's one thing that Pluvana does, other DSSs don't do. If we receive a report and it's not valid, um, and we can't conduct an investigation, we'll still at least reach out to the family to see if there's any services that they can use. Um, foster care, we've averaged eighteen children in foster care um, during fiscal year twenty-two. Next slide, please. Adult Protective Services and Adult Services, uh, we conducted one hundred and thirty-seven APS investigations. We average eleven new investigations per month. We conducted fifty-eight nursing home screenings with the health department. We um, managed adult service cases, we managed, we averaged thirty-one guardianship per month. And we conducted seventy-seven outreaches.
How many of the one thirty-seven were founded?
I'm sorry.
Of the one hundred, conducted one hundred and thirty-seven APS investigations.
I don't have it in front of me, but I can find out how many of them.
I was just interested to know how many.
Usually it's a pretty low percentage.
Yeah.
Um, with APS, we investigate for abuse, neglect, exploitation, and self-neglect. And there is a high level of founded self-neglect.
Always, yeah.
Um, but I'm not so sure about the others. Oh, you're fine. Um, so in the governor's, um, the state has a biennial budget. This is the second year of the biennial budget. And the governor's budget had a five percent pay increase for um, state-supported local employees for both years. So um, and I know the county administrator is recommending a five percent pay increase. And so based on the last year's formula, um, it came out to be about fifty-eight percent state-federal funds and forty-one point seven percent local funds for the pay increase. So um, for fiscal year twenty-four, a five percent increase would cost about ninety thousand dollars. And there's the breakout of how much is, of that would be state, federal, and how much local. And next slide, and this is just, um, this is just for informational purposes. Because we do follow the county pay plan, so whatever the county gives as far as pay increases is what we get. Um, but the last information that I got, the Senate and the House is recommending seven percent pay increases uh, this year for state-supported local employees. And so I just put that up there so that you could see um, what the dollar amount looks like for that.
And then, and just to add that to, I think I mentioned that same thing for constitutional officers and things like that, that, that's being discussed as well. Um, I, I know there's been some, some talk with, you know, uh, had some communication with David Blonde. And um, you know, David Blonde has a communication with VACO, Kevy Boyer with VACO about. So in, in years past, when, when they gave increases, sometimes there was language that said, as long as you gave a certain percentage over a biennium, you could qualify for the funding. So, so say for instance, last year, the state did a five percent increase, um, is what, is what they did. But the county did at least, for, for all county employees, I think at least eight percent um, between county, DSS, and sheriff's employees. So it could be put, it could be possible that if the county gave a combined percentage, say it's twelve percent over the biennium, the county may not have to give a seven percent this year, they may be able to give, say, a five percent, but still qualify for the funding. But that, that, the language has not been determined or it's not clear yet, but that's been discussed previously. Where, where there was some language that came out from the comp board where they really looked at it from a biennium standpoint, so.
Okay. Then, um, so along the increase, so we start looking at our budget. We started looking at this last summer, um, because the Social Services Board um, requests our budget, and it's due in November. So they have to approve it by October, so we start looking at it and, and planning usually around August. So, um, and not knowing what the county or the state or anybody else is going to do, um, we look at um, in the event that the county were to do targeted pay increases, which they are not, um, we looked at if we had anyone that would need a targeted increase. And so when we did the alignment study, it came back that there's two employees that are significantly under the recommended salary uh, for them based on the position that they're in and their experience ratio. And um, really only concerned about one of those employees and one that's forty-four percent. Um, they're in a higher pay grade and have a higher experience ratio than um, peers in similar positions. And, and this employee is making less than they are. Um, so a ten percent pay increase for that person would probably be, I think, around seven thousand dollars. And the local match for that would be around forty-seven sixty.
And Kim, just, I'm sorry, I was just going to ask, is that, is the ten percent above the potential five or seven percent, or is that? Or?
It's not, yeah, it's not taking in.
It's not taking.
It's, it is taking in consideration of five percent.
Okay.
If we were to get a five percent.
Okay, but it's not.
Because that's how we figured those out.
But it's not taking into consideration the potential extra two percent potential.
Correct. Correct. Um, but again, this is like, probably not even applicable if the county doesn't get targeted paying increases, so. But it was part of the, the Social Services Board's budget request. And then our CFP request. So one vehicle replacement is seventy thousand, I know that sounds a little high, and I think um, we're wanting to replace our two thousand eight van with a pickup truck. And I think the boards thought when we submitted the CFP request was for a pickup truck and not knowing what prices were going to be. We, after we made the request, we later found out, I think the sheriff's office was able. We, after we made the request, we later found out, I think the sheriff's office was able to get some trucks last year for forty thousand. Um, I'm hearing now that that's looking more like fifty. And I know the county administrator and his recommended budget included fifty thousand. And so I, I ju, I hope if that's why it's approved, that we can still get a truck come July for fifty thousand. Um, and just to explain that a little bit. So what we do is really boots on the ground. We do some pretty hard, difficult work to try to keep kids safe in their homes and adults safe in their homes. And, you know, there's been, um, cases where due to the conditions of the home, children were at risk of coming into foster care. And we actually go in and help them clean their houses. We load up trash and we haul off trash for people. For older people, um, out of some of our own budget lines, you know, we can find someone an electric recliner, a used one. And we'll go pick it up somewhere and, and take it to people. We find used washers and dryers and appliances and take them to people. And because we don't have a pickup truck, um, we use our van and we take the seats out. But then we don't, I mean, we're stored seats, so then we have to put them right back in. And so we're always taking the seats in and out. And the van's not always big enough, so a lot of times our staff, they'll borrow their spouse's truck. So they can do this. And I just feel like I shouldn't be asking my staff to do that. I should be giving them the tools to do their job with. So, but that's the, um, the CIP request.
And again, I think when they submitted the seventy thousand, and you can correct me if I'm wrong. I think they were just seeing what was standard kind of truck prices on the retail market. If you were to go out to a dealership and certainly after, um, we met and talked about the CIP, knowing what Public Works and, and the sheriff's office got. That's where I, I was, you know, I had conversation with, with Kim and just let her know that we could certainly do a lot better than seventy thousand for a pickup truck. So we've seen anywhere in the range of forty to forty-five for, you know, a, a well-equipped pickup truck, so.
Yeah, you can get one strip for them and, and that's our prices, yeah. Not to.
Yeah, we don't want anything real fancy, so. Just something to haul with.
Yeah.
And so just to summarize, um, again, our match rates, the pay increases, uh, the alignment increase. Um, we have the, the one employee that's pretty significantly under. And then, um, the RCF request. And that's all I have. And we don't have any questions for Cam.
And then I'll pull up her budget really quick here. Yeah, again, so her current budget for this current fiscal year is overall budget, which includes personnel operations. And then as some, I guess, public assistance funds down below. Those are mostly, would you say, Kim, just kind of like pastor funding more or less? Yeah. So, so the current budget's, you know, just a little under three point four million dollars. And my recommended budget is, it's actually about four thousand less than, than what it is. Um, but. And, and again, I didn't fund, because we were giving targeted raises and we were doing call of, I didn't put in the internal alignment study in here. Um, but otherwise everything was pretty flat for the most part. And I don't think we had any major, um, disagreements during, uh, during the budget, budget talks.
Okay.
All right, any questions for Cam?
So I'm just a question for the county administrator in terms of the, the full alignment. Um, why, why, why is this one employee so far off forty-four percent?
I don't know. I don't, I don't hire their employees and I don't know how they come in. Or again, they, they're on a different A scale than we are.
So that, so it's someone that's been with us for a while. And the agency's former practice was everyone started at the minimum, no matter what. And so unfortunately, this person started at a time when new employees were starting at minimum salaries. And so then all the people coming in after that employee were starting out more. And, um, and they just got behind and, you know, I've been trying to catch this person up. And we've been making, we've been making baby steps. We've been making some incremental increases, um, the last few years. But unfortunately, that one person is still kind of.
Okay.
Far behind.
So if that person leaves, you would be hiring them essentially, um, if somebody came in with the same qualification skills. You would be hiring somebody at about the rate you're suggesting that person get paid.
Probably.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, we use a salary determination worksheet. It's a, it's a spreadsheet. It's a formula that the state provides us to determine where we should start people out at based on their experience and the position that they're in. And, um, yeah, and, and which is the same form that we use to do the alignment, so.
Okay. All right, now last person is Fire and Rescue Association from, from Vice President. Vice President Dan.
Hello, everybody.
Hello, sir.
It's gonna be short, sweet. I didn't, no PowerPoints, nothing like that.
I agree.
Oh, a couple, a couple of things that I noticed someone sent me. And we've been texting back and forth and I've been texting with Dwayne this evening. One, let's see. All right, so our, on the budget side, our full request was one million, five fifteen, six forty-one. Uh, the administrators.
You said one million, five, five fifteen?
That's, that's what I got off of the thing. Yours was one, two, sixty-six, nine, sixty-three, is that right?
Yeah, see, I'm showing one million, four seventy-nine, three twenty-one as, as the full request.
Uh, that's just what, when you extend all works, yeah, it might be a typo somewhere or something. But anyway, if one or the other, it's around two hundred and forty-eight, six, something roughly difference. Um, I did notice that one of the big things, and that is the, uh, roughly a hundred and eighteen, six hundred thousand. That was really probably Louvanna Rescue. I know that's probably going over the Louvanna Emergency Services side. We all know what's going on there. The one big thing I did notice though is, um, in, in our meetings and conversations and through the FRA, Louvanna County Fire Department meetings. And, um, we have all intentions of keeping our chief one position, fire rescue chief or not. And that is not recommended to be funded this year.
The, wh, which ones are recommended to be funded?
Chief one, it's usually.
You told her the fire chief?
Our, our volunteer chief.
Volunteer chief one.
Yes. Yes. Um, that was taken out of the, of the bottom of that list on the, on your worksheet.
I, I, so what I did is I reduced it, so.
Normally, normally they're, oh, I didn't look there. I was looking at the very bottom where, where everybody's listed.
Yeah.
So is this still in there then?
Yeah, so, so it was requested for twelve and, and, and from what I was told before, money would go into chief one. Tore over year by year. And, and once the money would get to a certain point, then chief one would purchase a vehicle or purchase equipment from that. The way the county's been doing things with purchasing all apparatus, um, you know, uh, cars, apparatus and everything. I reduce it because there is actually in the CIP. I think it's either in the current year or, or, or one of these years that there is a, a, a replacement for the chief one vehicle in there. So, so I, I lowered the amount due to that.
There, there is, and then out of, out of that is fuel, um, anything, anything he needs, turnout gear. If he needs a gas detector for the car, whatever it might be, all that comes out of his budget. So the other fire companies don't have to suck it up. So, um, um, and typically most years it's been around ten, six hundred. I don't know where the twelve exactly came from. Um, I don't, I don't have that, um, information.
Yeah, that was just what came over as requested from the.
And that's, um, that, I guess that, that's a conversation that I need to have with Dwayne and bring back maybe an, another week while we're working on this or whatever. But, um, I'm glad to see something in there for it.
Yeah.
I miss that. Um, you know, and, and of course, um, John, uh, wanted me to mention that, you know, um. If we're not fully funded, then we got to make up the rest with fundraising and stuff. And then I know for us, it's, uh, with our increased calls and, and, and the things we have to do. It's hard for the, to get the guys to, to give even more time for fundraising. Um, as far as the CIP stuff, um. Uh, I, I would really like y'all to look at, right now it's, um, everything's getting funded other than Kent Store's brush truck. The equipment request I had and our UTV. I'd really like for y'all to look at Brush Thirty, um, that vehicle, the vehicle is twenty-five years old. Because it used to be a Tac Thirty and it was refurbished almo, almost ten years ago. So the refurb is around getting like nine years old or something.
Yeah, those twenties.
It's getting close to ten. Um, so that, that, that vehicle is gonna, you know, it's gonna be hard to get parts, things like that for soon. So, um, I'd really like y'all to take a look at that. If you find that, um, it looks like this is going to be a tough budget year, everybody has increases. So I, I, I totally understand, we, we totally understand where, where, where this is. Um, and then, um, our UTV is, could wait. Yes, it would be a very useful tool for many, many, many things. However, the, all the other budget stuff is way more important, um, than that vehicle. Um, I would, I would like for you to relook at our equipment request. Um, if y'all remember, um, I kind of caught Chris up on it. Um. We, we, we specked out the engine, um, at the county administrator's request, kind of helped us out. Um, we went to the board for funding for, to equip the truck. Um, we were granted a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars or a hundred and fourteen, something, somewhere in there. Um, unfortunately, that plus more we had to go ask for got ate up in all those big price increases over COVID. Um, before we finally got the contract signed on the truck last February. Um, so, so I basically, um, a hundred and fifteen, a hundred, it's like, like twenty thousand dollars or something. Um, I, I, I really honestly, I looked up a couple of things that as far as what I priced out the first time. So I didn't have a lot of time to turn stuff in and, you know, some stuff in, increased significantly. Um. If, if we can't do it this year, I get it. Um, the truck probably won't be here by, by the next July. Um, but it's some, some stuff is still taking a long time to get, um. Maybe, maybe if you guys find the funds, we could split it between two years. If, if the board is willing to grant that, um. Just, just throwing out some thoughts for you guys to talk about and think about. And like I said, I know you can't do, but what you can do, so.
How much? You know, I was gonna say, this is engine twenty-one?
Engine twenty, yes.
This is the one we approved two years ago.
So, so the, so it was approved, the contracts were signed last February.
Yeah.
The pre-engineering on it was supposed to be March. Then now it's moved both the ladder truck and that. Now they've both moved to somewhere between October and December. Um, I'm gonna see Kevin later this week and I'm gonna get him to check for me again to see if it's moved again. Um, it, I, I, I'll tell you what, it's, it's putting Fork Union in a bind. Uh, Pierce is way behind on their, on their trucks. And, um, that's, that's one of the big reasons why Fork Union opted to go with a different company for our tanker. We're, we're potentially gonna see that tanker before we see any of those trucks. And we signed the contracts for that a year later.
And it's really sad because Pierce is the most expensive truck and they're taking the longest to get it to us.
There's, there's, there's probably some thoughts I could share with all of y'all at this meeting. But, um, um, it, it's, it's, it's definitely puts us in a bind right now. We have, uh, Palmyra's engine eleven, we're running it as engine twenty-one because we're waiting on some parts for some repairs for twenty-one. Um, through Atlantic, so it's, and then now we've taken an engine out of the middle of the county, which creates another potential issue at times. Where, where both those should really be there and, um. Um. But anyway, um, I, I'd like to see the funding come back because, I mean, we, we. Um, at some point, um, and that's, that's pretty much, pretty much all I have with it.
And just, just to kind of go over some of the fire and rescue budget. I mean, so you got some of the top lines that are here that are, some of these lines, they don't really have anything to do with. They're, they're mostly like insurance, like line of duty, um, veh, uh, vehicle insurance, general liability. Again, the county pays all the insurance for all the companies and everything. Um, we pay it directly. So, you know, we look at what the averages are, looking at what, how premiums are going. So, a-again, they requested a certain amount and, and they plus it up by, I don't remember what, what John, uh, priced them up at. But after we looked at all the actuals and stuff for insurance, we, we did feel that a, a increase was warranted, but maybe not to the degree that they had it, um, had it at. Uh, besides some of the insurance things, you know, really the biggest thing really gets down to probably the operational piece. Um, again, so Lake Monticello requested, you know, you got Lake Monticello, you got Louvanna Fire, which, which divvies, uh, divvies the funds up between the three companies, Fork Union, Palmyra, and Kent Store. And then you've got, um, Louvanna Rescue. And so, so for Lake Monticello, in the current fiscal year, they are funded a, a little over three hundred and fifty-one thousand. They requested four hundred and seventy-five thousand. I funded them at four hundred and four thousand. Um, for Louvanna Fire, again, current year, they're, they're funded at two hundred and one thousand. They requested two hundred and forty-six thousand and I funded that two twenty-five. Um, as, as, as Chief, uh, Ally was talking about for Louvanna Rescue. Um, again, we funded them at one sixteen or over one sixteen. Um, and then, and then it was requested a little bit more. But with Louvanna going to Department of Emergency Services, what I did is I basically funded, funded the one sixteen-six. I think is, I, I funded it for basically three months because our contract with DRT ends, um, September thirtieth. So I, I basically funded this amount for a quarter, um, in, in, in this budget. So it's, so that's when the twenty ninety-two fifty came in. Um, um, besides everything else was pretty much the same. You know, we, 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 we fund or we pay payments to Lake Monticello. Or debt that they took out personally for some of their apparatus previously, but the county's been paying for it. For one, for, um, Pumper fifty-one. And actually this, for this current year, Pumper fifty-one, that, that, that's the last year for, uh, that we have to make a payment of fifty-five thousand. And then also Lake Monticello did a building expansion and the county committed to paying sixty-five thousand dollars a year towards their building expansion. And so that payment falls off in twenty twenty-five. So we're having about a hundred and twenty thousand falling off within the next couple of fiscal years. But, but those are really some of the biggest, um.
I'm gonna ask one question.
Yes.
And, and because you're here, you can answer. Scroll back up one more block. I'm sure there's a good reason. Y'all are at a hundred and six and everybody else is around seventy. Right. Between Fork Union, Kent Store, and, um, Palmyra.
Oh, wait a minute, hold on, say that again.
Look, right, one oh-six and sixty-eight and seventy-one.
Right here, these are the breakdowns of the request and it's something slightly off here. And I'll go back, but it's, it doesn't quite equal two forty-six, but I, but I, I know Fork Union's was, um, higher than the other two.
I, I think, I, I mean, and ours, I think, year before was a little bit too. And, and usually what we do is, um, Pete and I sit down and we just kind of, same thing kind of John does. We just taking, you know, up the fuel just a little bit for potential increases, whatever, things like that. And, and, um, uh, uh. I, I would have to go back and get what we did out really, and, and I could bring that back next week. Um, uh, definitely.
Uh, you can email it to me.
Uh, our fuel bill is really high because we, we, we have a pretty long, long run to the lake in the, in the.
Scotchville.
The call and Scotch, and plus that's another thing. Our, our first duty area is probably the largest in the county. So we, our, our fuel bills are high, um, but that's one thing. I mean, um. Well, it, it, it really doesn't, doesn't, and all that. In the end, our, our county treasurer takes whatever the total budget check is per quarter, puts it evenly three ways, and that's what everybody gets. Um, and so we don't get a larger check than what Palmyra and Kent Store do. The total budget just gets split evenly between everyone.
How do you pay for that? I mean, it seems like if that's the case, then you have higher fuel costs than the other departments.
I don't, I don't know how else we could do it, honestly. We just, it's just how they've always done it.
It seems like at the end, what you're saying is you're really getting.
That would probably be a. That would probably be a conversation that 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 Duane should be involved in too, but um. Um, he couldn't be here tonight.
So like to me, you're saying that even beyond ideology, at the end of the year, he's gonna run out of money before everybody else.
Their operational expenses are all even and they're paying more for fuel.
See, but 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 I I thought I heard before that that was not the case. I thought I heard it was broken up. So I I I could be completely wrong, but I remember someone said that to me before that.
I I've I've always understood it to be the other way. Now I could be.
Okay.
I could be wrong. Um, um, but I I I'm pretty sure that's that's how we do it. So so what he does is he he um. Well, I do I do know before he sends us our checks, he takes and pays the fuel bill back to the school out of. Whatever the total um quarterly check is and then. Then he then he cuts checks to the three companies for for us, for for our needs um. Uh, the only thing, the other thing I had up. I I don't know what Duane's operating expenses are. I'll have to talk to him. Five thousand might be a little bit low um.
Yeah, what's that? I I I didn't cut it out. I I just know the conversations that I had previously from how the funds.
The recommended five thousand for him might be. Might be a little low. I don't know. I I'll have to get him, talk to him and he'll have to. Look at what he's spending from year to year of far as is not counting the saving back for a vehicle replacement um. That that's something I need to get from him. And I think next week, John and I will be.
After the C I P.
At the at all that, yeah.
So we can ask then what the.
I can I can get more clarity. I can try to um. I can definitely try to um. Get.
No, I wouldn't try and throw you under the bus.
No, no, I just I was I wasn't prepared for that one question on that um.
I just saw the difference between the three.
Well, if the fuel bill is paid prior to making the disbursement to all departments and the points you have to get is equal.
Right, I mean, we're we're. It it's all shared evenly in the end. So the total, the total, the total funding would get benefits a- a- all of us either way. Um.
Might be useful to separate that line to just fuel.
Yeah, I just had that one question. And I'm sorry, I didn't want to try and throw you under the bus.
No, no, no.
It's just one thing, it caught my attention that looking at the board, that got big enough numbers to read.
That's that's what we're here for, um, or whatever.
And like like you know, this year's gonna be awful tough because we're biting off.
Watching everybody.
We're biting we're biting off rescue and everything else and fire and.
The the only the only one I missed so far is the um is the um constitutional office presentation. And I just didn't go back and listen to the audio afterwards because we didn't zoom that one. So. Um, I I'm sure that one increased too. Uh, what their needs, so um it's 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 unfortunate, um even though covid isn't widely talked about anymore. It seems like the increases are still coming um on uh fire trucks. They've recently had one industry-wide, um they're getting a little further apart, but they're still happening. Um, and they're pretty significant when they happen. So.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, sir.
Yes.
Okay, we are done with that and that's we had action matters.
I will tell you one thing that makes you smile. I'm taking a class right now and we're in the class today and one of the supervisors from one of our. Outside of Northern Virginia, you know how we've always felt that Northern Virginia gets a coke, but the cost of competing. Allowance, they've now increased that to seventeen counties, so it's now expanded outside of Plamen District Day. Well, one of the supervisors was going, I know everybody in the state gets this money. And I'm going, no, 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 we don't. And. It it's just a matter of time before that ends up getting here because this was in. Uh, not Spacemania, but. What's your county right next to that? Well, anyway, Fredericksburg, they get a twenty-five percent coke. And Culpeper gets a twenty-five percent coke coke gun, so they can compete with the Northern Virginia and Northern Virginia gets. Whatever they get, so they can compete with Maryland and Washington. Like I said, it's just, I said, well, what about us? We don't get anything. We have to compete with the people that are competing with them.
Do they understand?
No, man. Well, the the one gentleman that was in charge said, well, it doesn't wind up being that much money.
So so for the budget balance sheet here, I mean, so so the board has in front of you. You've got a a couple of documents that Miss Milton gave you. One is the budget balance sheet. So again, the column right here, the big yellow column that you see, this this column down here reflects anything. Again, let's just use uh Joyce, uh Miss Pace's budget. It reflects anything that was requested as the full request. But what I didn't include and what what amount I didn't include in those budgets. So again, for here. What I did not fund out of her full request was three eight thousand three ninety-two. And as you go down the whole line, you can see all the different departments. Uh, and what amounts I did or did not fund out of the full out of the full request. And also you got the C I P down here as well. So that's that's what the 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 co-ed budget column is. It shows what is the difference between what was fully fully requested. Versus what I funded. So now we're here at kind of getting to the B O S advertised and and there'll be a couple iterations of this. But but a couple of things, I just wanted to bring to the board's attention here. So one, I was going back and and. When I gave the board the presentation, my budget presentation, I don't remember what day it was, I think it was February one. And I was going back looking at some things. I ended up flip flopping some numbers around. So let me show you right here um under. Um, it it it's basically, well, slightly costing you gold. So here, when I when I put in. The the uh the staff pay plan wedge and the insurance wedge, I put five hundred thousand and one fifty-six. What it really should have been is five hundred and fifty thousand and some change. And that that should have been closer to, what's that, like ninety-nine thousand? Cause what I did is we were. When I when my budget was being proposed, um, we were we were projecting a potential ten percent increase. So in my budget, I only funded five percent of that, which means that. Either um the percentages came back less or we would have to do some type of changes to the health insurance plans. Um, let's just say that we realized a full ten percent increase. So that was one, just kind of a little flip flop mistake. And so all I did was. Flip flop was the fifty-seven, one sixty-two, again, taking that away from the health insurance and then. Going to the staff pay, it should have been more like five fifty-seven. In addition to that, I noticed one little. A one little rounding, well, it was a little bit of an error when I was calculating the benefits associated with that health insurance. With the um staff pay plan increase. I should have, it should have been closer to another thirty-two thousand dollars on top of that. So I only put that out to the side there that um. If if the county is to offer the full five percent, I think I'm a little short on what the what the. FICA, V R S and those types of things are by about by about thirty-two thousand dollars. Um, I also noticed too, there was one, there was one slight change in one department. As I was going back through, looking at every individual budget sheets, there was one department um. That I actually funded a thousand dollars too much in the in my budget than what I actually put on their sheet.
Which one was that?
Public uh Public Works. But I went back to look at their individual budget sheet. I think I think I had on there five twenty-nine is what I put on the budget sheet. But it was really five twenty-eight, so. Um, so that those are some of the changes from there um. You know, the one thing that we talked about is, you know, it's kind of up in the air, what's gonna happen be between the five and seven percent. Um, so if if the state decides that they want. And and not knowing what the language is gonna be like, if the state says that they're gonna provide a seven percent for state. State-supported employees, which is some of the constitutional officers and 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 D S S. Again, the county has generally paid the same percentage across for all. Now, if that were to 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 take place. Every one percent equates to about a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. So again, if.
Is that everything, including FICA and all that?
Yes, that 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 amount is one eighteen, it is the corrected amount including FICA. Now, there is an offset to that too. Certainly, if we get. Um, if the county were to pay that, we also get some reimbursement funding from this comp board. And D S S. So every one percent from the comp board equates to about twenty-one thousand. And every uh one percent from D S S funding equates to about ten thousand dollars. So that's just one thing. Again, I haven't added that in there, but I wanted to just bring it to the board's attention. Uh, the other thing certainly is too, um, the schools came came forward uh at the last meeting. And they kinda gave us their full budget request. Um, their state and federal numbers were higher. Um, than what we had in the budget from what we what what the numbers we originally received. By about a million dollars for state and federal funding. And so that's really an offset, that's really an offset of. Cause the state funding and the federal funding is very specific for what they can use that for. So if you, if the board says we're going to fund those expenses. There's offsetting revenues up top to go with that. And then that kinda brings you to really. The two-point-six-million-dollar request that they that they came forward with the board last week. So so let's just say again. On this meeting, the board really has to determine what is the max tax rate they wanna advertise. And so we can plug numbers in, we can adjust the tax rates, we have everything ready to go. Um, but you know, certainly, I I'll just put this in here just so you can see what it does. So if we put in two. Six, seven, four, zero, zero, three, if the board says we wanna fund that amount. Now we're, again, because we had a one-thousand-dollar surplus, we're two-point-six-million-dollar short. And just for uh, just to kinda see what that uh 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 equates to. I think it equates to about eighty-eight-five is what we did before, isn't that right?
And equalize the seventy-seven five?
Yeah, now we have about fifty thousand in surplus if you do that, but I mean, so again, we could play around with some numbers. But just so you get an order of magnitude, again, you also have in front of you. The per penny and per nickel calculations. So every per penny is about three hundred and sixty-three thousand and per nickel is one sixty-six thousand. Um, so I'm just gonna undo those. I just wanted you to see kind of what what that looks like and what it. Amounts to um from the full funding. So like I said, happy to kinda go through things with the board. I don't know how deep you wanna get into things today. Again. What we have to do, we have to advertise because it's a reassessment year and I'll show you what the um the advertisement looks like. Um. So again, the advertisement and and this is this is per the code of Virginia. We have to say that that's an assessment year and what type of increase we've seen because of those assessments. So we're seeing about overall in 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 in. Uh, value of real property before and after equates to about a twelve-point-two-nine percent increase from assessments. And then what that basically says here is because we have um. That twelve-point-two-nine percent, what is the tax rate? For this year, the equalized tax rate that basically gives us the same amount of revenue as the previous year. So as I've as I've mentioned to the board, the equalized rate is seventy-seven-five, seventy-seven uh five. Our current tax rate's at uh eighty s- uh eighty-seven, and so that goes out at seventy-seven-five. And then this section here for the effective rate increase, well, I don't know what the effective rate increase is until the board. Um, once the board says this is the rate we wanna advertise, then 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 finance will go through and will calculate. Um, the percentages and everything from there. But.
What are we at right now?
My proposed.
No, 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 no.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven. We're at eighty-seven right now. So eighty-seven equalizes seventy-seven-five. My proposed budget, not including schools, is eighty-one. So it's three and a half cents above. The equalized rate, which is which is a a tax increase from the average homeowner.
And most of that is due to rescue.
Mostly, yeah.
And and increases.
Yeah, yep.
But the bulk of of that is three cents for rescue or two cents.
Yeah, probably. I mean, it's it's probably, it's probably two cents for rescue and then there's a lot of others.
If we have the other departments we're talking about are positioned, we're talking about adding, then you're looking at three cents.
Yeah.
So that's that's the equivalent of our. Raise right over.
So because of because of risk assessment here, the board's gonna say this is. This is the max rate we want. This is the ad that's gonna go in the paper and it's gonna go in for two weeks. Again, in April, we will have a public hearing because we have to do, we have to put out this notice thirty days in advance. Of the budget being adopted. So in April, we'll have a budget public hearing on. On this tax rate increase, but then there'll be the actual budget because, you know, from this point on, there'll be a lot of work sessions. Where the board's really digging into what's the final budget gonna look like. You know, we'll get some, you know, we'll get some. Potentially some increased numbers from Mr. Sh- uh Mr. Mel Sheridan, the commissioner and. We we we'll probably get solving.
I don't think we're gonna find eleven cents.
I do not think we'll we'll see eleven cents. Um, so again, we're we're happy to kinda. Do whatever the board wants and 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 kinda. Get in, get into it as deep as you want right now, or does the board just wanna. Put a put a tax rate and then get get into it later. I mean, certainly, whatever you put out, that's what the public's gonna see and that's what gets advertised.
Well, I think that's always well, to to let the public see that and gauge what they feel about it, yeah.
And again, too, and and just 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 as a reminder too, again. We had um a a little bit of an anomaly in the current fiscal year, you know, uh auto prices went up so. Uh, auto assess assess values went up so high that the board. To try and make it revenue neutral last year, we dropped the the personal property tax rate from four thirty-five. Down to three seventy, sixty-five cents. Well, when I got the initial values from the commissioner this year. I was at a one-point-two-million-dollar shortage of revenue based upon that. So. So again, to try and get up to neutral in the revenue, I had to increase the the personal property tax rate from four fifty. I'm sorry, three seventy up to four thirteen.
Basically trying to equalize the personal property, right?
Yep. So like I said, I'm I'm happy to, we can do anything and then the board wants at this point.
I will remind folks that we were the only ones around here that lowered it last year. I was in faith. We were all in favor of doing. To help out, but nobody else in the area did that. They just left their rates where they were.
With the increased value, so they got more money.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I think Collinsville and Almora both left at the same rate.
Everybody did. We're the only ones.
Yeah, but they had very significant increases in their uh property values. So they they really.
Well, e- e- everybody did. I mean, it was a thirty-five percent jump, something like that, forty percent jump and.
I think I saw recently that Green County, because of it, is giving, I think they were giving a refund. Um, in in the current fiscal year, but I think most others. The tax rate was the tax rate.
Yeah, alright.
So we can then we'll take it back.
No, we. We tried to keep it equalized like we do at the real estate. We're as close to equalized as we can. And so I mean, we made that effort. I just hope people realize that we made that effort. They weren't happy when their bill showed up, but.
And.
Um.
So the eighty-one cents. In the real estate residential to in the ninety-seven-five.
Yeah, so 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 what the ninety-seven-five is, so basically on all all uh taxable values for real estate. Whether it's residential, commercial. W- w- we're applying the tax rate to it and 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 what we say is from a budgetary standpoint. We're only gonna collect ninety-seven-point-five percent of the real estate this year.
Right.
And again, personal property tax rate, and then we'll only collect ninety-four-point-five percent in the current budget year. I mean, certainly in in future years, we we also budget for delinquent real estate um and and personal property tax collections. But that's to be conservative and make sure, because we know we're not gonna get a hundred percent of what what we've built, so.
And that number used to be lower and.
Yep.
With your. Expertise in financial stuff, we've gone up that, because I think it was used to be ninety-four.
Yeah, I think it was, it was, yeah, the the real estate was less. I think the personal property was down to ninety-two-point-five and we we bumped that up.
Cause we've been collecting at a better rate to keep them closer.
So you said that um the rate now would be eighty seven cents?
Well, if, if, if you want to fund, well. So, so I can go through the exercise and put everything in and and see what it is if you want to do that. I mean, again. Well, the one thing we don't have is, is if the state does the two percent, the additional two percent. I can plug in the, the expense and the revenues and you can see what that is and then. You know, unless the board wants to add back. Add back things in um. That I didn't fund in my budget, you know, again, for instance, uh. Well, you can go back to, um, where these, go back to this pace, uh, this pace here. If you think we should fund, fund the June primary out of the tax rate, we'll just add in thirty eight, three ninety two there. And so now you see we're thirty seven thousand dollars short. And so we either are gonna cut other things, other expenses, or we've gotta. Add some more revenue elsewhere, so.
Um, personally, I was just gonna say, personally, I think we should add in seven hundred thousand dollars for. Kim's budget for that one individual. I know we don't do targeted increases, but we spend a lot of time doing. Conversation studies and trying to get everybody to the same place and. This person seems to be way out of alignment. And on top of it, uh. You know, as she pointed out, if she loses that person, we're gonna end up paying that same amount of money. So I think for the seven thousand dollars. Risking the loss of an employee who is, you know, been here a long time. And would be replaced with an, who knows, an unknown quantity at the same amount, doesn't make a lot of sense, so. Yeah, that stood out to me as one of the items that. We should probably add in, it's a very significant item, but pretty small from that standpoint.
No. And did you say you, you couldn't do that if this, if the county doesn't do targeted? Is that what I heard you say or?
Well, because we're part of the county's pay plan.
Yeah.
Um, and I know. A few years ago, the county had party of pay increases and we didn't know it, so we did our alignment and then we came back. After the fact, and I was told that. If, if we ask for it, we need to do it during budget season. So. At the time we submitted our budget, we didn't know if the county was gonna be doing targeted pay increases or not.
Was that back in twenty seventeen or eighteen or something?
Yeah, so we were trying to be proactive this year and go ahead and and put that in our request. In the event, but I think. The decision is, is yours. But I think generally we, we do follow the county's pay plan.
So that was how much?
Seven or eight thousand dollars.
Asking for two.
A little more than.
If she had to choose, she'd rather have this one, because it was a forty four. But I'm just saying, if they're asking for two and we go, you get it, you don't.
Not to. I mean, can't, can't we save those conversations for?
Oh, we can, yeah, no, we can. No, no, I mean, I think we could plug in eighty eight cents and go home tonight and. You know, that's, that's fine by me. I'm, I'm alright with that.
And I don't think I have to.
I'm just saying that's, that gives us the, you know, we don't have any discussions with regard to the schools. We don't know what that other number is. You know, it's a number that the public can then digest, give us their thoughts on it, come back and have a session with us. But we're not committed to, to that.
You know, we're not committed to whatever we put up there, of course.
Right, okay.
But um, and, and I always, my analogy. For a, a lot of things that citizens um misunderstand, especially when it comes to taxes. Is I, you know, I always think about, you know, the parents, two parents get home from work or. And we're one parent and they're getting the kids fed and off to soccer practice and. Make sure they did their homework and get to bed and so many people. Don't know that we didn't think their vehicles. Should have, that we didn't increase the value of their vehicles on personal property by however much, and they don't know that when they got their reassessment. Notice that that doesn't mean that's exactly what they're gonna pay in taxes. And, and a lot of people, so when we go putting out stuff like that, it might be. Yes, it's true that it will likely change, but I'm just saying my concern is it ends up. Unduly alarming. A lot of people.
And I, and I think that's my point, right, is, is. If people are alarmed and they come out and they speak about it, if they're not alarmed, then they don't do it. So, you know. Mr. Sheridan pointed out the fact that last year we were the only county that actually lowered, the other ones that actually. Um, you know, either raised or stayed put. Um, you know, so ultimately. You know, whether we think the schools, for example, should be fully funded, or whether Kim should get fifteen thousand, or whether we get the seven percent or whatever. Ultimately, you know, if you look at the trend line. If we're not competitive in one area and we're competing against these other people. Then those things kind of play out. So, you know, part of our, part of my approach has always been to. You know, try to make sure that as a county, we are competitive with surrounding counties and they were providing quality services. Um, and we've come a long way and I'm certainly not, you know, I'm not interested in paying more taxes by any means. Um, but I think that at the end of the day, the, the value is the core services that we provide. Um, and that, and the importance of making sure that we're not losing qualified employees. To surrounding counties because we're being penny wise and foolish is, is important, so. Um, so I'm, I'm, I, I know that we have this philosophical debate every year in terms of saying, well, if you advertise this rate. Then you open the door for getting that max rate. You advertise a lower rate, you get it. But really, isn't that the function of the public to come back to us and say? You guys must be out of your mind, you know, put this out there. Um, so it shouldn't be our function in this stage to set an artificial limit just because we're doing that. And we're gonna do that, we're just gonna target a rate, let's stop the charade and just say. We're gonna put out this rate and call it the end of the day. I mean, you know, that's kind of my, my annual speech on this. Cause I haven't changed my mind, you know.
And it works. I mean, we've done it a lot of times and we come back and we tackle it and. And we don't have people come before us.
Like I would relatively rare and, you know, but. Um, you know, there's, there's people that will always complain about an increase in taxes and there's people that will say that. I'm more interested in making sure that there's quality services and that, you know. Fire gets to me when I need it and rescue gets to me and that there's quality teachers and. You know, that social services is doing their job and that they're not backlogged and. You know, that sheriff's department is providing law and order and all those kinds of good things, so I think that's, you know.
It is, it's on, on my side, how many people complain about it would not likely be what affects. What I think the rate should be. Um, I mean. You know, uh, uh. A Louisa board member said to me two weeks ago, something like, we're not here to do the easy stuff. And um, we weren't elected to do the easy stuff. And so, I mean, whatever, I think the rate should be is what I'm gonna end up voting for the rate to be.
And I would say we welcome.
Yeah.
I would, you know, the extraordinary thing on the table right now is. You know, the fact that we've gotta put in a lot of money. Uh, for the, for the fire and rescue uh uh position. Um, of course, the, you know, I mean, we're playing. Back up to the state, which is playing catch up to the fact that we haven't provided the raises that they need to do and. We then have to absorb those and, you know, we have seen a really. Steady trend of increases from the state, which are, you know, significant. Um, and, you know, they're playing, they're playing catch up and so therefore we're playing catch up because they recognize that as a problem.
And I don't think we know, you know. I don't think we know yet what the final numbers from the state are.
We don't.
For the schools, I mean, so, you know, and I don't think they're gonna go the wrong direction. I think they're finally starting to realize that in two thousand and ten, they put us behind the James O'Leary ball. And we've been trying to dodge getting knocked off the table for the last twelve years. Um, that's a conversation like I said, we have all the time.
We, we haven't been given anything that shows. Not the rate, but the increase or decrease or like over a past ten year period. Yeah, and, and again, not the, not the rate, but for example, eighty one, uh. Cause you'd have to know what the equalized was.
So we have, we have a chart and, and I just ran across it. There, we have an equalized chart that showed the rate every year. And then I think the years that we had reassessments, what was the equalized rate that year? I think it was, what was equalized? What did the county administrator propose and then what ended up finally being um. Uh, a- adopted.
Well, I have another one, which actually shows the adopted rates adjusted for inflation.
Yep.
And how they compare to the past.
I mean, so we could, we could, we could pull some of those up for future meetings. We won't have it today, of course, but I'm sure, so, so, you know, like a ten year. Yeah, yeah, we have, we have.
The other one that's helpful is the big chart that talks about. The values of the, of, of the top and then.
You have about the houses?
Yeah, the houses, that, that, I usually put that in the post office.
I, I'll show you. We have to, we're still updating it right now, so this is a chart. And, and, and don't mind this, this is from a previous year that we have to get all the information. But I'll, I'll just use this, this was a previous year, so the tax rate was eighty eight four. And it showed if you went down to eighty seven, what was the annual, you know, decrease? If you went up to ninety cents, what is the annual increase? So it's based upon a.
Right.
You know, a house of a hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred, two fifty, three hundred, three fifty, things like that. And we also had something similar for the per nickel too. So we just, this has to be updated, so we, we had planned to give this to the board.
And one thing that would be crazy and it's, I don't think it's any way you can do this, is what was asked for. What we wound up giving. Like today, we're talking about eighty eight point five. It hurts me to say that number. I'm sorry, folks, it does. Um.
Well, I think, I think you said you just had that. I think you said that you had the advertised.
No, 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 no. I said what was asked for.
The advertised rate?
No.
The full ask for.
Yeah.
The full. Yeah, and there's no way you can come up with that. Or it'd be, it would be way too much work.
Yeah, and like I said, we have, we have what was equalized, what was proposed by the county administrator and then what the board ended up adopting is, is what we have. Gotcha, we have, we have.
We's historically tried, no, I'm talking about the ask for.
No, no, I get that.
You know, that, that would be. Anybody thinks this is easy? Good luck with that.
So we have one, we have one um tax rate on the table. Something else? Anybody else?
One tax rate on the table?
I mean.
Well, I mean, I just, I just put out a number out there saying, you know, we're not gonna negotiate this all right now.
Yeah, I mean.
It's an advertised rate and, you know, explain my philosophy on. Eighty eight five is, I think, what he put in, which was fully funding the schools and left fifty thousand dollars. More or less to the plus, so, but did not count for the potential two percent change there. Um, but that's, you know, that's a, uh, what a. Uh, a penny and a half over what we're doing, he said eighty seven cents.
Yeah.
It's a penny, it's a penny and a half over the current tax rate. It's. Eleven cents over the, the actual.
Yeah, I just want to remember, our current tax rate is eighty seven cents.
It's eighty seven cents, but.
So anything above seventy seven five, that's, that's the, that's the actual change in the tax rate.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a big change. Now, I also think that the other thing that we, you know, in trying to compete with other counties, and we made progress on this as well too, is. You know, that fifteen, no, it's fifteen percent. Yeah, but the, where we've made progress is that, you know, we used to be. The second or third highest tax rate. You know, not necessarily the tax burden, but the tax rate. Of the seven or eight counties, and I think we're now at the fourth.
Yeah, we're not, I mean, yeah.
We're not, we're not, we're kind of more in the median and that. You know, that's because other towns, that's what people see, right? When they go to buy a house, they look at that, they say, well, you know.
But there are other factors.
But there are other factors. And of course, we've had less lovers of the counties as well, so.
Oh, I, I'm. I've said to the stakeholders who talked to me about it in the months coming up to this. Just talking about EMS and so on. That. This wouldn't be the year. To get everything you want. And not that I'm saying anybody has, um, I'm sure not. But this is just. This is a year where. To me. Um, we've got to find some ways to stay away from, we gotta find places to stay away from eighty eight.
Every year is not the year I've been on the board. We said it every year. Working, we're working out, I mean, yeah, it's always. And we, and it's always front in our mind and maybe that's a good thing. Keep you grounded, but we always say it's a tough year and every year, every year's gonna be tough. This is tough stuff.
Yeah, I mean, but you all don't fully fund every year though.
No, so you find a way.
Yeah, we all.
Yeah, we advertise and then we all come back.
I don't think we've ever.
We can break this.
I don't think we've ever advertised it fully eighty eight five. I don't think we've ever.
Is that what we would need to fund your budget?
Everything.
No, well, I mean, if, if you add the school request in, yeah, it would be eighty, fund the school's full request.
On top of the administrator's budget.
On top of my current budget, not including the potential two percent. Change that could happen from the, from the.
Well, the two percent.
You, you probably, I mean, if you're gonna fund everything, you probably need to be close to eighty nine cents, honestly. If, if you were gonna just say, let's put everything in and that's what we're gonna fund.
But if we did what you've suggested, which is you, you didn't fully fund it, did you?
No, fund it. So he didn't have any other funding for the school.
Without anything for the school, so let's say you, you paid six hundred thousand for the schools, you're looking at it, eight, three cents and.
Yeah.
Minimum there, so. Uh, yeah.
And what will we know from the school?
You know, the state.
When, when will we know what we're getting from the state? It's, it's.
Don't say no.
Always.
The, the House and Senate versions that have come out are wildly different from each other. They really are. I've never seen a difference like this. Um, and they have told us that we're gonna have the answer in four days.
I will hope that because we have. One party in charge of one and one party in charge of the other, that they're actually going to get something done and they're gonna sit down at a table. And learn what the word compromise means and come meet somewhere in the middle, but we don't know that.
With as different as they are, it's really difficult for me to add any insight about how they will accomplish that.
How far are they off? You have an idea?
Um, you know.
I thought I heard a million. No, uh, well, I thought I heard on, on the schools one, I thought Brenda said they were about a million.
Yeah.
There was about a million differential.
A little more.
Is that okay?
A, a million is nothing for them.
Just for us.
Yeah.
Oh, just for us. Both them back in, they, they win.
Yeah, typically, we can use that. Bridge sheet, the cap calculation tool. And the different versions that are out there, the, the governors proposed, the House version, the Senate version, they're, they're typically fairly aligned. And we can plug those numbers in and just have a few that we are, we need to be seeing. These are. I, we, we're not really sure what to do with it. They're so different.
When they're promising you in four days, it'll be some long nights in Richmond.
They, they said the twenty fifth.
They're gonna burn the midnight candles.
Twenty fifth is when we would have an answer or a budget.
So, so, so what I, what I envisioned is, so again, we got the, we got the, the meeting here tonight, March one, we're back at Terrence Brook again. Uh, for um departments and, and C F agent, I'm sorry, department and C I P review. And then we got a regular meeting at seven P M. But the March eighth meeting, we're back in here again. And I see the March eighth meeting is, is getting into the. Getting, getting into a variety of things. And, and, and I talked to the commissioner today, today too. And he's hoping he'll have some updated values for me by that point, prior to that meeting too.
I was just gonna add that, you know, I think one of the things that this board has accomplished over the last. Seven or eight sessions, budgeted sessions, is that for the most part, we've, we've had almost unanimous consent. Except for two or three times on the budget. And so we, we, we do come to consensus at the end of the day, regardless of what rate we put out there.
I don't know, we've had five oh votes all the time.
I, I said almost unanimous, but we've had several.
But we've had a couple, we've had a couple.
We've had, I think, three, three fives and several four ones.
I think for the last. Two to three years, we've had five oh.
Yeah, we have.
We had one when you and I first started, so. We, it's, it's been, you know, there's been a couple of.
We've done our best to try and not go lean one way or the other. We've done our best to try and not go lean one way or the other, but try and do what's best to serve the citizens of the county and to also not take a bite out of them or too big of a bite.
And is there any feel for how long ago it was that, let's say, if the, if it got fully funded? For how long ago it was that Indiana had that size tax increase, fourteen or so percent?
When we first came on, it, well, I mean, no, it was equalized. What was, we went from god awful. Eighty-one?
Eighty-one or something like that.
But not being equalized, I mean, truly increasing people's taxes by fourteen percent.
That was the, that was, yeah, that was part of the equalization. And they were, and they were pushing, they didn't do it, but they were pushing. For, I think they, they went from fifty-eight to sixty-one, but they were asking for sixty-eight cents, uh, is what, if I recall, something like that.
That year, I know that we fully funded what the schools asked for, and that was like a one point three million, if I remember correctly. It's a long time ago. But I know, I'm pretty sure we gave like a one point three million dollar increase, which was back then a lot. That's five or six cents on the dollar right there.
Yeah, but that inflation adjusted one that we did, it actually shows that the overall tax burden on an inflation adjusted basis has gone down for some of our residents, not, not gone up on an inflation adjusted basis. And I think that's significant when we're in a period of eight, nine percent inflation for the last year. Uh, that's nothing to sneeze at because we haven't been in that, so.
Yeah, and that's the other thing we're gonna take.
Yeah, so, I mean, you date eight percent and you take your fifteen percent and it's, it's, you know, it's not, not as, not what you think, right?
Well, I mean, you know, I sit down with a lot of these folks from around the state and anyway, that's a conversation for another day.
Okay, so where are we?
Well, in the speedance of time, I'll just make the motion for eighty-eight five and see if we have three votes for it and move on and go from there.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I can't do, I can't, I can't second eighty-eight five. Oh. I was sitting there thinking eighty-six or something to that as a top end number, eighty-six, five, something of that nature. What are y'all thoughts on that? I'm not, I'm not making a motion yet, but that's.
So that, that motion does probably didn't have a second. So did we have another motion on the floor? Mike?
Well, what do y'all think about that? Miss Eager? I know it's high, but.
What did you say?
I said eighty-six, five. And we don't ever, knock on wood, we haven't ended up there. We've been able to find stuff. I won't say be invented, but we've been able to work hard at it. That's the one thing, that's the reason I think we've. Miss Eager, what are your thoughts?
Well, the, uh, equalized rate is now seventy-seven five.
Seventy-seven five, yes ma'am. But we, we know we got three or four cents for fire and rescue. And if we do raises, well, God, I mean, we don't have to do our share of five percent raise or seven percent raise, but then we're gonna have a mass exits on our hand. And I, I always talked about trying to take care of our employees to make them feel like it's family.
Don't we always, seems that we always try to give everybody the same raise?
Yes, ma'am.
But the school is asking for what, twelve percent?
I think they're trying to do marked increases.
Yeah, I think it's between seven to thirteen, is that the, cap at thirteen?
Yes, I think it's what it is thirteen. The lowest would be seven. And that's based on the study that we presented. I'm happy to answer questions about it, but I don't feel that. That brings most of our positions to still be last.
But of the five we compared to, but then there are others that.
Yes.
Are below us that are neighbors.
Yeah. You said between seven and.
Thirteen.
Thirteen is a cap.
Um, but don't you usually give everybody the same thing? No, you don't. You do.
Uh huh.
Okay, I was still the lowest even with that.
Of, of the five that we picked, or the four, four competitors that we picked. One has an L C I of eight point eight. They got the highest L C I in the state.
That's closer. So you, can you, um, give Kim the money? Can we give Kim the money for her, uh, employee that is so far behind? Without having to give everybody the same rate?
I, I assume the board can do that. I mean, again, that, all, all it does, it goes against what was agreed upon for, for D S S following the county's personnel policy and the way that the county provides a raise. That's.
That's a tough task.
But it's up to the board, it's entirely up to the board.
It's eventually our decision. We can do what we want. I mean, we could make the tax rate a dollar. How many people just had it thrown?
Then, then you'll get a lot of, a lot of public engagement.
We're eighty-six, seven.
Uh, no, no, ma'am, I had made a motion. I'm just, I'm being, yeah, I just, I just, I just.
Well, we need.
What number do you have in your mind if you don't, Chris? I mean, that leaves us with a room. It's why I went that high.
Yeah. You said, you went to what?
Uh, eighty-six, five is just, just popped into my head. Don't ask me why. Maybe I'll go play the lottery and pick eight, six, five.
But if you're fully funding this.
It would be short of seven, well, six hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay.
Six hundred and fifty thousand, because it's two pennies shorter.
But you, but you don't know if they're gonna go to seven percent, which then that changes all of that as well too, so.
Hmm, that's right.
And, and but, but I think they've got the seven percent in there. So, I mean, it doesn't change your school budget at all.
No, but it changes the county's budget.
Changes ours, but to me, a hundred and seventy-four thousand, if we have to, we take that out of the general fund. I know that's not a good practice to do, but we could issue just because.
And we used to do.
We, we've done it, we've done it in the past, and a hundred and seventy-four is not a big number.
Right, and that takes it from five percent to seven percent raise?
Yes, ma'am. If we, the one seventy-four, that if we had to find one seventy-four for the county, then, I mean, I'm not against saying, okay, we'll take that out of our general fund. This is a one-time thing because, and I mean, I know we'd have to make it up next year, but.
Yeah, it's not a one time.
It's not a one-time thing, but I guess what I'm saying is we can do that now because hopefully we've got some things coming that can help provide our residents' tax relief.
Right.
I don't know how long it'll take to get here, but.
And what is that? Mail may have some.
An industry. Hopefully we have some, because we've been, we've been.
Working on it.
We've been working on it hard now, and, and, and that's all of us, I mean. So hopefully that gets started and that will be an influx to help relieve some of this. I mean, I drove by yesterday in a colonial circle, they got stuff sticking up out the ground, the stakes or if they put footers down or what.
I think it's all residential.
Yeah, they've got.
Not at the front corner, at the front. In the front, supposed to be the road.
No, they, they've got pads poured through for some of the apartment building.
Yeah, is that what that is?
There's nothing commercial started there.
Okay, all right, well, because the commercial's supposed to be between there and the circle, so there ain't a whole lot of room left for the commercial. That's why I thought maybe that was some of it, because it's right up near the front.
Is it right to the left of the entrance?
No.
The apartments are more in the middle.
And no, it's, I mean, this, this is not back towards the middle. This is, you come off the circle and it kind of goes like this and boom, right there.
That's gotta be commercial.
I, I was thinking that was the commercial section.
And apartments are like, it's spot in the middle of the thing.
Yeah, I, I hope to drive. We can, we can sit here and guess. And I don't think it's as deep as my eyes aren't.
It's a, it's a lot of plumbing stubs coming out of it. It's suggesting to me that it's residential, that it's apartments.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe that is.
All right, so what we.
Anyone?
I'll make a motion for it.
Uh, I, well.
That's, that's a great.
Let's continue our discussion. But guys, y'all haven't said anything about a number.
Well, you've, you've asked them and they haven't. So how long will we got it? We all wanted to say anything.
Well, I'm, I'm continuing to do math and.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I felt like I had a pretty good feel of the budget in general and some different thoughts I had throughout it and you know, the school's budget certainly and, and the, uh, pay increases and so on, certainly put a larger factor of things I don't know. I mean, I understand the presentation, but.
We're just picking a cap tonight.
Yeah, I know. I didn't mean it.
I mean, no, no, I'm, I'm, didn't take it that way. That's the only thing I'm saying is, I'm not trying to say that's what I think the tax rate's gonna be. I'm trying to come up with a cap that leaves us room for margin of error, but doesn't cause Mrs. Eager's husband to have a stroke when he reads a newspaper tomorrow.
Yeah, every time I come to this meeting, he always says lower the tax rate, and it could be December.
Hey, you gotta love consistency. Can I phone a friend and call Mr. Weiser?
All right, y'all, come on, let's, let's get to.
What are your thoughts, Chris?
Well, the, um, in order to fund our, uh, the budget a hundred percent, it's eighty-seven cents.
Eighty-eight five.
Eighty-eight five.
Well, I mean, to fund the budget a hundred percent is probably closer to eighty-nine.
Yeah.
Okay, so eighty-seven was the rate.
Eighty-seven is the current tax rate.
Tax rate with the, uh, and the equalized rate was.
Seventy-seven five, yeah.
So I don't understand, I mean, we, we've raised, we've increased the budget, uh, like more than ten cents.
That's what they're asking for. The, the, they asked her for more than ten cent, but we knew that three cents was coming from fire and, from the rescue. Decided that we were gonna have to do. We don't have a choice on that. Unless we just wanna go without, and that's not a choice.
Hmm.
And then you got pay raises. If we're gonna get pay raises, that's gonna cost us something.
And what did you say? Eighty-six five?
He said.
I'd say eighty-six, but he said eighty-eight five the first time, thinking about the biggest number, just go ahead and say the biggest number, go all and be done. And I said that.
So eighty-six five, it's gonna make us work a little harder than eighty-eight five. So that's a good thing.
And this group's never been afraid for a part. I know that.
So it puts five cents on top of the administrator's budget?
Correct.
Yep. Well, you said eighty-six five.
Five and a half. That's not really an accurate, not really an accurate statement because it's an incomplete budget. Right, because he doesn't have the school's budget in there at all. So it's an incomplete budget, so it's.
But no, I mean.
We're leaving five and a half.
Pre, preschool budget.
Five and a half cents for the school if we don't find money out of where, o- other places, or if we, you know, we could cut other stuff. We could come in and say, we want to get rid of all the nonprofits. I'm not saying to do that, but.
So did you make a motion?
I did not. Mr. O'Brien did.
Okay. No, this, this motion.
Well, no, he came back about eighty-six five.
No, I thought you did.
Well, you, I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion for eighty-six five.
All right, motion by Mr. Sherman, eighty-five is advertised to eighty, and second by Mr. O'Brien, all in favor?
All right.
Okay, and.
I'm sorry, but I hate sitting here and laugh, but I'm.
I'm on gavel, even if you.
I was having, I was having visions of the Golden Girls up.
All right, all right, we have that. Now we have to make the motions, read the law. You have to go ahead and put all.
No, I mean, no, because a- a- all we need is the tax rate. I mean, just go, let me just go back.
Make a motion that you advertise the tax rate eighty-six.
That, that's what we're gonna do and, and, and we'll factor in all the percentage increases. Let me just.
But you gotta have, you gotta have, is it just the real estate? Or do we have to say every one of them?
No, let me just double check.
When we made the final thing, I think.
Maximum real estate.
Thank you all for all the food and stuff over there, but it's so far away from us.
If I don't find a moon pie.
Table that we wanted to share, so.
Get you one, get him a moon pie.
No, no, too late.
I, I'm good. Okay, I told Kayla.
I'm all with her up.
We don't taste food, hold on.
So I guess let's, let's, let's do this because it talks about proposed total budget increase. Um, and so I, just to kind of make it complete here, so we're showing two million dollars surplus. Do you want to just plug that two million dollars in someplace right now?
Yeah, yeah.
Education.
So we will put. Okay, so our budget is balanced at zero. And so, so we'll plug in all these numbers and then.
You told me it was exactly two million.
Wow.
Six seventy-five.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's, that's all we need. The board made the motion on the tax rate. We, we have where.
Okay.
Where the expense is going. I'm sorry, was that?
I don't think we have anything else to do.
We don't have anything. Oh.
Oh, hold on, no, you're, you're right. Hold on, where's the advertisements motion? Here we go.
Yeah, have the advertisement.
Did we have it in here, Caitlin? No.
One thing about.
Last minute, that's all.
I had somebody call me two days and say, could my share and you help this? Um, Luna, stray cats, could we find another place, she could move a stray one. Maybe you might, I don't know, Miss. What you can do is.
Okay. So there we go, there's the motion.
They don't charge much at all. I took seventeen. All right, someone make most.
Eighty-six five, all right. I move the board supervisors authorized staff to advertise FY twenty-four proposed real property tax rate public hearing on April twelfth, twenty twenty-three. The advertised proposed real property tax rate is eighty-six point five for one hundred effective for calendar year twenty twenty-three.
All right, it has been motioned by Mr. Sherman and second by Mr. O'Brien, all in favor?
All right.
And chair votes back. Okay.
Five, zero.
Yes, five, zero. I don't think we have any.
Motion, the, uh, the personal property?
No, no, no. Because, because again, this is just for the equalized tax rate.
So we have no closed session, no new, no unfinished business. Having second, anyone second in German, second by, uh, motion to second and third, who is in all favor?
Thank y'all for coming out, young people.